All right, it is Monday, June 12th. We are doing this protest today. I have all these signs here. Uh, I'm gonna be holding up this one myself. Got a little plan here that I'd like to share with people. I got fried mushrooms and fried pickles that anyone can take. And you know what? No one's taking one, so I'm gonna eat one. Um. You know, in this and the actual decoration itself right there. Seriously, if no one's gonna eat them, then I'm gonna eat them. I got them so that people could eat by guess not a lot of people showed up. And it's just me with my one stamp that I got. Oh, he's Steinmeier. Okay. Pope art Steinmeier. It's candleless. I don't really get this side very well, so this time maybe over here. Oscar Stewart. He's the one.
Okay, let's get started. Welcome to the council study session for June 12th, 2023. Here we are at City Hall, Council Chamber. One eleven East Maple. Uh, so we've got three items on the agenda for tonight. Arch program with the fire department, I'm correct on that? And next thing is the mayor's advisory council on commission on effective reform. And then we're in discussion about. And then we'll have staff reports after that. Uh, Mr. City Manager, would you like to tee up number one course, please?
Uh, just to be clear, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have one miscue. I would like to ask the council to give me their discretion. Uh, allowing Brett Coleman, CEO of CenterPoint, uh, to take him an announcement of what CenterPoint is about to do on in the city, which is an exciting proposal and exciting prospects. And we were just gonna give him a couple of minutes to speak, but I just wanted to see if, uh, we could actually do that in a formal way, make a motion in a second to change the agenda. And then just do a voice vote and then change the agenda and then allow Mr. Coleman to speak. Is that okay with everybody? We've got a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, those in favor relying Brett Coleman, CEO of CenterPoint, to talk about their proposal. Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Coleman, where are you at? Please come on, take the podium and please share with us, uh, your exciting news about CenterPoint.
Thank you very much for making that amendment and giving me a couple of minutes. So one of the things that is a frustration to many people when they come to CenterPoint is sometimes wait times in emergency room. It's frustrating to any of us. And so one of the things that's happening in healthcare is an emergency care hospital that is outside of the campus of hospitals. So our proposal is to put an emergency care hospital at 23rd and Lee Summit. So if you know where the CVS is, the CVS would actually come down and an entire new building would be built that would have 12 emergency beds, it would have three inpatient beds. And, um, you know, for us that have lived here for a long time, I've lived within, uh, 10 miles of CenterPoint or Independence Regional MCI. My kids were born there for 20 plus years, 25 years. You know that Independence Regional used to be much more centrally located for the majority of citizens in Independence. And I think that was one of the things that people were frustrated about when CenterPoint was built. And I think this is one of the best things that we can do to help serve the community, uh, central to, to the Independence community. And so this is more than a $20 million project. Uh, it'll have employees, it has great paying jobs. It'll have great services that make it easy for people to have access. It will have to go through the Missouri Certificate of Need process, which is a little bit of a process to make sure that things are done for healthcare that are needed, not just wanted. And so one of the things that I would like to invite anyone, I've included a sample letter of support, but any of you individually or in addition as a council, I would invite you to send me a letter of support. You can email it to me. Um, I don't know if I have my email address on here, but it's, uh, Brett.Coleman@hcahealthcare.com. And we'd love to have a letter of support and, um, not only send it to them, but send it, um, to, we will make sure it gets to the state. So, any questions?
Any questions for anyone? Uh, I think it's exciting to be a good use for that corner and an easy corner to get to, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And Mr. City Manager, uh, thanks for giving me that heads up on that. We need to move on to the Arch program, even though the Arch program is very, very important. I hope, uh, the officers, firefighters are not upset with us for the two minutes, so.
I think it's a great segue and I think without further ado, we could go ahead and ask, uh, John Varell from our Independence Fire Department to come forward and make, uh, uh, update to the council on this very exciting program.
Okay. Please receive, Mr. Varell.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is, uh, John Varell. I'm the, uh, Program Manager, the interim Program Manager, uh, for Independence Arch. I had the opportunity to come speak with you all last year before we began our testing for this program. So I'm happy to brief and chat with you, uh, about what we've hired over the past 12 months. There are two reports, uh, that have been filed over each of the pilot programs. They contain a lot of our data, information, a lot of our outcomes. So instead of kind of diving into those, just gonna give you a real brief overview of what we've experienced so far. Uh, Arch does stand for Alternative Response for Community Health. Uh, we have two goals. Uh, the first goal is to keep emergency responders available in the community, keeping available for high acuity events. Our second goal is on those low acuity events, to take those 911 calls, sit with individuals and figure out what the best immediate option is for them to be resource specialists. And it's been the time that we easily spent in these situations, figuring out these situations and getting folks where they need to be. Uh, like I mentioned, we did do two pilot programs. Arch one, uh, was done last year. Uh, it was for two days a week, it was one crew. And we had good data out of that program, we recognized the media were consistent coverage. Uh, so we did the Arch two program, which was on Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It actually involved multiple crews on duty for around 50 hours a week. Our daily operations, we clocked in 7:00 AM, we left dispatch mode, we were available for calls. And the group consisted of a minimum of one paramedic and one social worker. The paramedic was a community paramedic, uh, they're focused on mental health, uh, mental health treatment, uh, community healthcare concerns. And the social worker was a licensed clinical social worker. So it's one of the highest levels of social worker you can be, they're essentially independent, uh, behavioral health practitioners. Once we left dispatch mode, we're in service, we would do what's called our follow-up list. Early on in March one, we recognized that, um, going out on the scene, sitting out with individuals, talking through their concerns often wasn't, wasn't sufficient. There was an important follow-up piece to that. And we wanted to check in, uh, see if the resources we provided were effective, see how they were progressing along in, in the, um, dealing with the emergency, see the initiative of the 911 call. So we started the, the follow-up list. It's become now a daily occurrence for us, um, that we look at preceding 911 units. We make a list of individuals in the community that we're gonna want to talk to in person and see how they're progressing. See if the resources we gave worked, uh, see if they were getting any hiccups. Dive a little bit more into their situations if they, if they so chose. And it's really helped us guide some care, provide some better treatments for the long term. Once we got those problems done, we ran 911 calls while we were doing follow-ups. Slow, we'd go to the community members' houses, uh, when we caught calls, we, uh, we ran them. We got 911 calls in three different ways. The most obvious one is a 911 call comes in the dispatch. The dispatcher recognizes that it's appropriate for us, uh, and they send us. Another way is fire, police or EMS go out to the scene, they recognize we can be a useful asset for whatever reason, and they call us out to that location. The last way is we actually get assign ourselves two calls. We have a mobile data terminal there in the car with us. If an 911 call comes up, we feel like it's appropriate for us and we can ask to be assigned to that call. At all times during this, we operate at pleasure, uh, Independence Police Department. And if they perceive that to have us do a call, take us off the call, uh, we do, we do what they ask us to do. In addition to those things, there's other, there's other items that occupy our time as well, especially during the pilot programs. Um, we have been doing a lot of work with coordinating care and networking with area agencies. Early on in March one, we ran a call where we, we met an individual in the community, a parent, um, and their two young children, both of them. They needed shelter that day. Um, I spent an hour and a half with them. I couldn't get placed. Uh, I called every resource that I had listed, all the things I thought I had set up. But I don't bring them to it. That was a little watershed moment for two reasons. First off, it taught us that it can sometimes be exceptionally difficult to find immediate shelter. Sometimes it's not, sometimes it is, uh, but it can be challenging. It's a problem we consistently, uh, are facing in this program is the option to have immediate shelter, uh, without no obstacles. The second thing it taught us is that we have to have connections with area resources. Uh, it can't be 2:30 PM and we're at the corner of 23rd and Stirling, we call such and such an agency. Cold call, having never talked to them and say, hey, can you do X, Y, Z for this community member? The first question is, who are you and why are you calling? We have to have those connections with those area agencies. They have to know, I say, this is John, I'm from March, this is what they do, this is what we can do. So we're constantly working on that. We're constantly working on policy development. Some of the things we're doing, I'm really excited about, they're new, um, and so that means that they're a little bit explored. One of the areas is, uh, um, clearance of suicidal ideation in the field. Uh, we have, uh, situations come up fairly frequently, someone makes statements that could be considered suicidal ideation. So emergency services respond. Uh, before Arch existed, those emergency service providers had to make the decision on seeing, was this person serious or not? And their level of tolerance of that is very low because first off, they're not mental health professionals, and second off, it's a risk to allow that person to remain in the community. So instead, they need to take it to an ER and assess, and that can be a lengthy process, can be a difficult process. So Arch allows us to clear certain cases of suicidal ideation in the field because we have mental health professionals. We're trying to do that, but that means we have the resource policy, we have the local best practices, we have to develop that, uh, train people on that and write those policies. So we've been working hard to make sure that we're doing it, um, responsibly and legally. Our last, um, last thing we're constantly doing is monitoring our level of involvement with individuals. Um, some situations will take as much as you can give. Uh, one situation in particular that we've been encountering is an individual in our community that calls 911 frequently for some mental health concerns. I think predominantly because they won't. So we've been interacting with that individual, we've been going out chatting with that individual. That's a short-term outcome, we don't want to be that permanent solution. So we're constantly watching how we're interacting with community members to say, let's be that short-term, let's get them connected to resources, let's be that guard fail. But really, the long-term is not us, it's something different, something more permanent. A lot of challenges we faced, um, really some of the biggest ones is defining, uh, what success is in the short-term. Some of these, some of these challenges are, um, are pretty massive, mental health issues, um, broken relationships, financial situations that can feel overwhelming. And so it might, it's a little bit idealistic to think we're gonna show up for three weeks, interact with someone three or four times and have some significant improvement. So instead of kind of, we've had to kind of pull back our nose a little bit and look at some short-term successes, um, that we need to see. Metrics that are a little bit more measurable, like diversions. And metrics that Arch finds measurable, what the patient, the client satisfaction, what connections do they have? What things that they engage with that they wouldn't otherwise engage with? That does lead me into the, uh, the challenge of determining financial cost versus benefit. We responded on a situation, uh, during the beginning of Arch two. We're an individual in our community who's making some suicidal statements. We need to handle the domestic violence situation. Uh, we responded alongside two police officers, they arrived on the scene. The police officers asked a couple of questions and they talked to us and they said, hey, we've got several calls pending, are you guys okay? We said, yeah, we're good, so they took off. Uh, we sat with this individual, individual for about 20 minutes. During that assessment, we recognized that this individual would be best served by going to a mental health care facility. That facility was in Kansas, it's about a 25-minute drive. We talked it over with them. Uh, we are independent of all our services, we have nothing else to be besides this, we transported that person to that facility. It was the right location, it was the best outcome for them, it was actually close to other family supports. And had we not been there in that particular situation, those officers would have had to remain on scene. And ambulance probably would have been involved, it would have been transported to the local ER. If you look at several studies, an average ER stay for mental health can be excessive, say six to eight hours. That can potentially involve a second transfer to a second facility. There are costs associated with all of those things. It's hard to define, some of those costs aren't city direct costs, but they're infrastructure costs. Where benefits to us, we exist in that, benefits to infrastructure, benefits to keeping the units in service and benefits to add a vision, to the right facility in the moment. Well, that's the challenge of the trial and error. I've said several times, this is a little bit new and it is, we're learning by doing. Sometimes those are successes, sometimes those are failures. And I, I should be definitely emphasizing, it's not just our trial and error. Police, fire, EMS, and really especially police. Our leaders operate in their realm. Their leaders kind of explore how, how, uh, how to do this, um, in their field and get exceptional patient with us. They've been teaching us a lot of, a lot of things. And I'd be remiss to not say we're all learning this and there is a learning curve to this experience. I, uh, I can talk a lot about the little success stories we had. Relative to what I'm trying to keep it down to just a few. Uh, there are benefits to non-uniform personnel being on 911 scenes. There are limitations to that as well, and again, that goes back to that trial and error. Uh, we had one situation where a member of our community was making, um, making suicidal statements. They were particularly edgy about uniforms, we get on the scene through a variety of reasons. Police secure the scene force, um, and they were very gracious to let us have that scene that we have on ourselves. We chatted with this individual for quite a long time and over the course of two weeks, we worked with this, this individual to have immediate care and then long-term care. I finally followed this individual about two and a half weeks later, saw them, um, in a much better state, they were connected with pharmacy resources, they were back on medication. They were seeking the right care, they had appointments for that care, they had job opportunities lined up. And I'm not saying we were the sole reason for that, really, the individual made it happen. But there is a benefit to having that time in non-uniformed environment to sit and explore what's going on and try to connect them immediately with their own resources. Um, we're, we, we very much like that we do serve two purposes. We're not just focused on the community members and we're not just focused on diverting emergency units. We do both and we recognize that it's a variable situation, any situation needs to be assessed to see what the appropriate balance is. Um, another great benefit is we're integrated community paramedicine. Uh, you might have heard that term floating around in, um, in the news now and then. Community paramedicine is basically putting paramedics out of the field in people's homes and to help them deal with, um, social issues, long-term chronic medical issues. The idea being so we can reduce 911 calls and improve community outcomes by doing so. We're doing that, we're starting to do that, we're taking a step further over recognizing that mental health care is also a critical part of that. So we're putting community paramedics and highly trained mental health professionals in these scenes to not only work towards better outcomes with medical issues, but also mental health care issues. We had one situation here in the end of Arch two where someone had both of those situations going on. The paramedic and the social worker had to work together to resolve several incidents to get them connected to immediate medical, um, resources. We actually ended up transporting this individual to several different resources. Um, and an analysis of that situation after the fact noted that 911 calls had dropped to zero in the, in the following two-week period. They could pop back up again, we do see that. We did see a significant improvement in the patient's immediate state and 911 volume afterwards. So, uh, our second pilot ended on the 5th of May. We were really worried to stop the program because when you stop something like this, we lose, we lose momentum. First responders start to get used to our presence and all of a sudden we're out there again. The learning that we're gaining and we're trying to build on all of a sudden stops. Uh, so we have enough personnel, with the blessing of our bosses, we just kept going. And we were going today, we were running until 4:15 today, keeping this going. Trying to keep our presence in the community, to keep learning and also keep working with the first responders. So we're still available Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM with, with some algorithms for staffing because we are, we are fully staffed right now. So, uh, next step, the big one, is, uh, is securing permanent funding for this program. We would look something along the lines of two community paramedics and two social workers. Multidisciplinary, uh, two paramedics from the fire department and two social workers from the health department running this car Monday through Friday, uh, for hours that are yet to be established. We would like to further develop our 911 infrastructure. I don't need to tell you all, um, hiring is tough right now, our 911 center is not immune to that. And so we have really tried to, to be gentle on the expectations we have of our 911 center because some of these, they are just, they are just fighting to stay above water. But as we move forward, as they get more stable, we'd like to work with the matter on what it takes to dispatch out Arch SOA or alongside other 911 units. Uh, we would like to increase our cross-agency communication. Every situation is different, I hate to say that because it's so ambiguous, but it's, it's true. There are some situations where it's absolutely appropriate for us to 100% disengage and traditional, traditional services take over. Uh, but I'd be remiss to not point out if, unless we, um, are closely communicating with IBD, closely communicating with comprehensive, with AMR, um, that we're not offering any, a, a, the best approach towards particularly difficult prices. We need to be in close communication with our 911 managers and our area partners on dealing with some of these especially challenging things that we have in our city. Now, the last thing is, is we do need to look at some sort of documentation system, um, to support what we're doing. We're not case managers, I want to make that about me clear. We are short-term resource folks, trying to connect people, um, to the right resources. But that does require effective documentation, not only to provide the proper care, um, but also to protect ourselves as we move forward. I, uh, I have an answer to any questions, but I do want to say how much, how we have to understand this, how much we appreciate the opportunity to have tried this. This is new, it is different, it's challenging, um, the city didn't have to take this on, but we did. We appreciate being able to be the ones to try it out and we're really hopeful for the future.
Thank you very much for your time for the number of success stories too. And, uh, I'm very excited about the progress you've made in the attempt to say how do we do this differently? And, uh, I just wanted to say, you know, from my perspective, congratulations and I appreciate what you've done and I've discovered really good things to do, so thank you very much. But with that, uh, I didn't mean to take any else's, uh, questions or things like that, so please open up. Mr. Mayor. Please proceed.
All right, thanks for everything you've done. Super excited about this, uh, we got our health department back. This is one of the main priorities that, um, that we have to handle. You know I'm excited about this, so thank you. There's a blank of the stars that, that aren't there. Have you liked this work? Cause you're, you're a firefighter.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is not without its challenges and I, I hear that fire truck going by, there's, there's moments. But I have spent my whole career sitting on emergency scenes that can, actually, I wish we could do something more and, um, those incidents don't come up every day, but they do come up and I'm grateful to be part of that. And I'm grateful for the work with good people too. And we've got good people working on this, I'm proud to be a part of it. We, as well, part, to be their driver most days, honestly.
Has it been okay working inside of other emergency services in the city? I'm not asking you to call anybody out, but, uh, have there been obstacles working with the other emergency services? Or have you found a way to work within the current framework?
We're finding that way. There are significant obstacles, but it's not people, it's, uh, technology, um, and it's the unknown. Very Arch one especially, we would show up and people would understandably ask, what, what can you do and what can't you do? And we would have to say, well, we're not quite sure, we're gonna figure that out. We refined our draft policies many, many times as we provide that. So, um, we're working, working with, uh, the different 911 services has been fantastic. I'm really, I'm really hopeful as we move forward, as we can work on the beach, that we'll get more and more signals.
Have you found, uh, any of the patrol officers have, have they started to rely on you or turn to you? As time has passed, that they've found cases or calls that they've seen get the Arch guys out of here?
Yes, sir, actually, that goes both ways. We've been, we've been learning what to rely on, on them, what is appropriate for us to turn the scene over to them, and what to back out. So I think it's been a very process on both sides. Just last week, um, myself and several police officers were in the case of how best to deal with the situation that involved, um, legal matters and mental health matters. I was really encouraged by that conversation because it needs to be a balance, uh, of all those things, in my opinion, in most situations.
In an ideal world, how many Arch units would you have? What do you and a mental health professional, how many would you have out there?
Starting out, we're still learning. I do, we have been operational on the streets for really around four and a half months. That is not much. If we look at other programs across the country that are similar, their, their, their growth has been organic. So I would say, I, I'm very pleased with where we're at. I would like to see us earn our keep more before we invest in additional units. And I think we will, but I'd like to, I'd like to grow first.
So put in another six to eight months and then take stock, or what do you think?
Yes, sir.
Full-time, full-time, Monday to Friday? Seven to five, eight to five, that kind of thing?
Potentially, scheduling is something we've been discussing. We're open to a variety of options. I will say the one thing, that we're very cautious about overnight operations. There are some safety concerns overnight and I understand there is a need in that. Certainly not saying that's a hard line, but a question that you're not ready to reach yet. I'd like to see a year of operations and reevaluate our effectiveness where we can move forward.
Do you feel like you've been effective and provided some relief and some help? What, what kind of, how would you evaluate the program then, so far?
We have been effective in, in, in certain situations. We have our success stories that I haven't listed. What happened after we disengaged? In some cases, I don't know.
Sure.
I do believe we're effective, um, and I do believe we offer more of a benefit than we cost. But I will say, even on the days we're not ineffective, um, I do feel like it's important to have that opportunity for individuals. We've had folks who might not refuse us constantly. In situations where it's very, they desperately need something, right? It's important that we're still, someone is still there to offer it. It's important that, that we're still present and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of a, a city that does that. We're willing to enforce the laws, but we're also willing to stand ready that if you need help, we're here to provide it, even if you don't want it.
Have you, uh, have you been involved in social work or that world before this?
Yes, sir.
It's a little different.
My eyes have been in education.
Yes, it's been, it's been a while, it's been education. There, there are, uh, there are, you, you take some hits and, um, there are a lot of things that can feel like losses, but the, the, the crucial part of it is not getting out.
Absolutely.
And, and there, there will be days. A friend sitting back there, behind you, Andrew Bower, you've probably made him mad or gotten to know him twice. There was a, there was a guy that was homeless. He used to sleep on a gas station and then outside, before he had, was sterling. He slept out there for like 18 months and she finally got him to go inside, uh, find a place, I don't know where he was now, but it took her literally 18 months to finally decide. I guess the time that that's what it takes sometimes. And I'm sure you've run across folks that. that it takes them to form the trust here.
Yes, sir. And I would like to mention also, the most effectiveness I think we've found speaking to all this issue is individuals, community members who are on the verge of homelessness. Once that threshold is crossed, I have, not acting like a speaking person right now, decreased challenges, changing that lifestyle or at least offering additional pathways. But we have had some effectiveness with individuals who I feel are on that verge who are in the nature of being homeless or surely.
Are there any areas that you've recognized that you can think of off the top of your head that you think we could improve on? Have you seen weaknesses that the city you think can improve on? I mean, I know there's lots of services we don't have out here yet, lots of services that Kansas City has. You mentioned, you know, mental health services or facilities that are 25 minutes away or downtown.
That's a tough question.
It is, isn't it?
The opening of Comprehensive Crisis Center has been a big change for us. We are a little bit of a mental health care ambulance. The thing about ambulances is they've got to have some place to take some tend as I mentioned. Having that crisis center here, our community has been very helpful for us. If I could say just within March, something we really would like to continue to grow is our cross-agency communication and approaching problems together. Fire, police, EMS, Comprehensive, and I think we're all working towards that. That's a tough, that's a really, that's a tall order, so just that question is something I'm really hoping to work on in the coming year as a group of city agencies.
Do you know what a drop-in center is? You have much familiarity with that? Speed of hearing about the AI, hope, faith, any of that?
Oh, I have experience.
Yes. That's one of the things we talk about a little bit with the council, something that some of us would like to see out on the side of town. Eastern Jackson County doesn't have much of that and some of us would like to see what that occurs on the side of town. At home base or something. Might be nice to bring services, uses of coordination for communication, that kind of stuff. Any other observations that, before I turn this over to my fellow council members, anything comes to mind?
No, sir.
Fair officials, they'll dig up much more. I just want to let you know, giving up your regular day job to take this challenge on is quite a challenge. So I'm very thankful that you've done this, very thankful.
I appreciate that, sir. It hasn't been a one-person job.
I understand that. I understand that, but it's a big task. And New Frontier and the people you've helped, that's a really good thing you've done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
John, I want to just first say, you know, I'm so grateful that you took this upon yourself, that you became a point spirited into an area that we have got to do better. And this city is, and our department, fire department, I don't even know what it gives you honor to the department and to this city. I can't say enough about you. I've watched you do some work in the field. You do it with a great level of compassion and I'm very proud to have you serving our city, first of all. And as well as all of our first responders, but you've taken on something new and you're really, the city needs to learn from what your treasures are becoming, right? The things you're storing now because we're talking about 21st century medical and mental health care business and we've got to figure out what that looks like. So you've got to take us forward as councils coming up. Everyone, you've got to learn how to do it better. And I can't give somebody who's more qualified to do something with what you know, the experience that you have, if you're the right guy for the job. So never doubt that. But that's something we've started talking about is that what does it look like in 21st century? How do we do it differently? And so what I would ask you is, you know, what else? Did I say a new van, an Arch van?
It's hard to miss, actually. It's hard to miss.
Yeah, it's big. So I didn't know if it was H-trac unit or something.
We're very thankful we have a van. It's been a great experience.
Is it equipped the way you see it or for now?
Yes, sir. It's got space. Great space.
I'm glad that we've made that investment in a program and it's serving us to make sure you keep us informed of what you need, what you're lacking, maybe something different. Because we need to know that, we need to be supported in that way. So what else do you see us needing today and the future as we look down? I know what you're saying is just the beginning, but you're a smart guy. What can we do better?
You give me too much credit.
I need this to talk about at least.
Some of those things I mentioned, the next steps are really what I see as our biggest opportunities to move forward. Our city, our foundation's goal is out there that is tried and true. Along that end, we recently went into a collaboration with the University of Denver, actually with the STAR program in Denver to work on curriculum for EMS, police, or EMS and fire providers for mental health care. So we're trying to reach out and do things like that. Documentation systems are significant. We have to have clear documentation policies, we have to do it well, and that does mean investing in some sort of technology. And of course, I hate to go back to this, but it is the truth, our agencies working together and I don't mean to imply they haven't. Actually, I've been extremely grateful again for the different agencies here in the city, how much they've been willing to work with us on this. It's been great. We've just got to continue working towards that because I can think of very few situations that didn't involve multiple 911 response agencies. And I apologize that I don't have any bigger goals than that. Something that's facing here right now.
I'm not asking you to bring us a tenure plan.
Okay.
But I'd certainly ask you if you're ahead of tenure plan. As you say, it's been working, of course, with PD and the resources they have. I think, you know, the fact we get to be servants of the greatest assets in this city, right, which are the people, it's an honor to do so. I'm glad that you're doing it. I'm glad that PD does what they do every day. But always keep the council informed what you're lacking or hindrances you see because we can't make that purposeful progress without that. And I've been talking with those on PD, they see it too. So I hope that dialogue, really, you guys just continue to create that synergy when it comes to these services. Drive it forward, drive it hard, let's do it right. But I tell you what, you are, we are very blessed to have you in the city and you're the right guy for the job. So you can be embarrassed by that all you want, but I'm going to stop saying this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
I was delighted to be able to go do a ride along with you. It's really a great opportunity for me to ask what probably is a couple of hundred questions and I will spare everybody lots of those, but I'm interested, you know, STAR model, there are programs that have been going for quite a long time. Denver, you mentioned Seattle's got one, there's several in Minnesota. What organizations are you learning from as they're doing their own, you know, five-year analysis on their data and how they've worked on that? Are you getting the resources you need for both training and best practices?
Yes, ma'am. Although I'd say we're having to cast a bit of a wide net, but for some of those practices, STAR has been a useful model to look at and again, we're just entering into that collaboration with them. But STAR, Ahoots, and most other agencies have a different model than we're doing here that has been a unique opportunity. All those agencies is a partnership between the mental health provider and the city. We're not doing that. We're, the city is taking this on 100%, which I must say has really given us a lot of freedom to build this exactly as we see fit and to treat every situation as the best way that we see fit. It started initially, it was a challenge, it turned into a real opportunity. And so we're reaching out just as much to different agencies that do community paramedic medicine. Central Jackson County has been a leader in that. We've talked with them quite a bit. We're actually in a working group with them because a lot of community paramedic practices mimic the things that we're trying to do, especially with follow-ups, interacting with the community. Things as simple as when we walk into a house doing a safety assessment, if it's an elderly community member with the products that are overturned, we look at ways they can get to a phone, do they have sustainable food sources, stuff like that. Things that we're hoping to institute in the near future. So STAR, Ahoots, they have been useful on a number of fronts, but really even social work, a lot of social work. We have a licensed college of social work student that's been writing with us over the past four months. They've been a really credit resource on some of the academic side of this, the best practices in the social work world. Our two social workers that work with us in the health department come from very different fields and both of them have been very useful with that background in medical and family. So it's been a pretty wide net. Those organizations are useful, but only to a limited extent. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I just, I hope that we make room for you to be able to go to trainings with other programs that have done it for a long time so that you can bring back ideas that you think would fit Independence well. So I hope we think along those lines. You mentioned doing follow-up. Is it just follow-up to the cases that you've already been referred or do your colleagues say, hey, John, would you mind following up with so-and-so for an interaction we had where we didn't have to arrest anybody or do anything, but they're going to likely need our services again?
Yes, ma'am. And I apologize, I was remiss to not mention that fire, police, and EMS have all sent us referrals and Black City Hall has sent us referrals. We treat those the same as any other calls. You make an appointment to meet with them along with whatever other resources we see appropriate. Several cases, we've brought them all, comprehensive mental health care providers, sometimes the providers will go back with us. Those calls are even more challenging because sometimes they're cold calls and a couple of people showing up in a big old bus, sometimes throws off some alarm bells versus us having that connection 911 beforehand. But it is absolutely something that we do if they're open to it.
When I did the ride along, you mentioned how surprised you were, how often you were being called to schools to support school resource officers. Have you found anything else surprising or do you want to comment upon that?
The surprising component of that was children. A large portion of our response involves kids. I actually just completed a separate report to our health department over the level of calls that have gone and involve, which is, really we need to start thinking about some specialized policies, specialized training, how to deal with those things. And of course, like all the other services field, those calls are especially challenging and present nothing particularly unique challenges.
Certainly in the survey done by the Independence Health Department and the one that was just completed by the Jackson County Health Department, mental health ranks either number one or number two of community concerns in areas that they're hoping we will expand our approaches to. So I'm delighted that this has been one of the city's responses to a growing and difficult problem. And I'm certainly delighted that when we expanded the fire department tax, hopefully that will give us a mechanism to be able to fund this into the future because sending a big fire truck for something that doesn't need a big fire truck and sending you and your special man instead, certainly a better use of IBD funds. So my appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The opportunity to ride along with you as well, it was an eye-opening experience here dealing with something that certainly is very critical and something I have no comfort with at all. And so I just, you know, I appreciate what you're doing and how you're doing it. That's really all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Sorry, one thing I just wanted to add for the council's benefit. Councilor Hobart mentioned the health department and Mr. Burrell mentioned partnerships. We do have our two social workers here this evening, Justin Newkirk and Cindy Jackson from the, and we recognize that part of that collaboration with Public Safety Health Department is playing a vital role in that service as well.
Thank you. That's just so important. Thank you for everything you do. We appreciate it. Because I know that's one thing that I've heard and I've, you know, all the council members can say this too, is, you know, how do we start to approach the problem of homelessness? And I'm sure you deal with lots of folks who are probably, John, what's the percentage of folks that you talk to who are homeless, in community or just, you know, just off the top of your head, just, you know, a big precise little letter check and stuff?
I don't know. I'd say certainly up to 30%, but oftentimes we actually don't even know.
Right, sure. I just want to say thank you very much. And when I first heard this presentation a while back, it was probably over a year ago, like I said, I was really excited about it. It's the life of the seat that Congress has made and it's been a really good two years since she's started the work. So thank you, excellent job. Does anyone else have any other comments? Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. And we cut the PowerPoint or does it say on the PowerPoint? Larry, we may need a second to get to the PowerPoint. Oh, it looks like it's up.
And Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of the commissioners from your ethics committee that are joining online, so if we could have just a moment, a quick commercial break to get those individuals brought in.
Let's do this. How about, yeah, we just take about a four-minute break and then we'll come back and be ready to go.
Thank you.
So if you could hang on. Do you have four minutes, Larry, that you can hang on?